This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Please be seated. Cormor of fifty being present, I call our 2024 Annual Town Meeting to order. Mr. Carl Keener, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please rise and join us if you will. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Keener. Greetings, fellow citizens of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It's a pleasure to serve you. Thank you for your support. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you as Southampton Cemetery Commission Clerk. There's no compensation for this privilege to serve you. I devote my time as clerk of the Southampton Cemetery Commission to be the contact for burials, requests, and all communication matters for the commission. It's a busy season, and I thank you for making tonight your priority. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, our legislative branch session called according to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed, and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may take action. Before we start, please know our beloved town clerk, Ms. Lucy Dalton, is unable to join us this evening. I know she's watching live now. Hi, Lucy. We need to elect a town clerk for night's annual town meeting. May I hear a nomination?
Mr. Moderator, I nominate Sabina McCarthy to serve as clerk.
Sabina McCarthy, do we hear another nomination? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of voting for Sabina McCarthy for town clerk for tonight's annual town meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. She sworn in soon to be Sabina? Sabina. I'll swear in, excuse me.
Aye, Sabina McCarthy. To uphold the duties and responsibilities of the town clerk at this annual town meeting.
In accordance with the institutions, town laws, and other laws.
In accordance with the general Commonwealth laws and the bylaws of the town of San Antonio.
Is this on?
It was a second. Return of the warrant. Annual Town Meeting, Tuesday, May 7, 2024, 7 o'clock at the Norris Elementary School, 34 Palmory Meadow Road, Southampton, Massachusetts. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof in six usual places in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as for said, given under our hands in this year 2024, signed by the Select Board, attested to by the Council. A tradition I started eighteen years ago is to honor those we love who have moved on ahead. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved on ahead since we last met? Hold them dear in our hearts. Thank you. Tonight, our annual town meeting will be broadcast locally on Channel 191 and streamed on the e-media YouTube site, easthamptonmedia.org. That link can also be found on the e-media Facebook page and Instagram. Thank you, Tim Riley, Jackson Foot, and your crew, and East Media, East Hampton Media. The warrant. Articles inter warrant posted at at least five locations to warn the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. Attendance used to be mandatory, and tardies were fined. It continues to be a purist form of democracy. Our forefathers gave their lives to protect this freedom. Southampton started town meetings 251 years ago. However, our 250th anniversary is next year. The executive branch of our town's government, the Select Board, Finance Committee, Treasurer, Collector, Accountant, Town Clerk, and Administrator have worked hard to create and weigh in on tonight's annual town meeting warrant articles. Their work is done. Although some of these executive branch members sit up front by our tradition, they do not individually have more of a vote or say tonight than any of you in our annual town meeting. Town moderators' rules, not town council's legal opinion, apply while a town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, which is a privilege, not a right, if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in the aisles or hallways. Duties of the moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate and provide an open process that voters trust and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully and partially, and consistently, regardless of who you are, not assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have the opportunity to ensure the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides will be heard for each article. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. The moderator's authority is over the process, not the outcome. I leave the outcome to you, the fully informed voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town. So if your inexperience here holds you back, allow me to walk through the process. Allow me to walk you through the process tonight. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to the mic where you describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of voters, your responsibility. Be the legislative branch of our town government for tonight's articles. You have the power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. Ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. It is crucial to set them early and stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to its rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules. One of my duties as your moderator is protect the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted per general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs, and practices we have followed for many years with guidance from the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time, a handbook, parliamentary law. Organic processes are customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Once a motion is read, and I have asked for and received a second, I invite a pro and then a con statement. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us. Merits or lack thereof for the motion. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator. That's when the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the mic up front. Stand in line to be recognized by the moderator in turn. First come, first served. I recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator. State your name and address clearly. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator. Don't speak directly to other voters. This prevents lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. Town meeting conduct is the moderator's responsibility as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 37, Subchapters 15 and 17. Speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion and address me and not the town meeting audience. And no more than two times on any article except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone the opportunity to be heard before your request to be listened to a second time on an article. Remarks concise to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point of rebuttal. No repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you are free to question and amend and to table or kill any motion. That is to legislate all in a civilized way. Amendments must be written in duplicate. One for myself to read as you vote, and one for the town clerk. Please print your name on it for our records. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. No applause. This meeting has its sacred roots and traditions for several hundreds of years. Please respect your neighbors who may vote differently than you. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after the third warning, so let this be our first warning. Anyone unsatisfied with the lack of information for an article may motion to adjourn town meeting to a time certain, which would be tomorrow evening, for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. I will use tellers for account unless it is unanimous or clearly a majority. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair and then compare counts. When they disagree, count resumes for a complete and accurate count to be announced so all can hear. They count from front to back. Right to speak. These rules of etiquette are unique to town meetings. Any reason to move the order of articles tonight? Hearing none, we proceed. Simply because someone states something, it does not make it accurate. Majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right. Any non-voting speakers to vet this evening. Listen courteously. Vote precisely as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist those in a more efficient meeting. Can I hear a motion for Article 1, please? My bad. I'd like to introduce the town administrator, Mr. Scott Skyback. It's been a pleasure working with him, and we look forward to continuing that pleasure. Thank you. Motion for Article 1, please.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $350,387 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion. Well, wait for the second invitation. One time, we seconded a motion quickly, and it was difficult to deal with. We should have denied it. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak in favor of this?
John Lumber, Select Board. A year ago, during the budget process, we amended the budget to reduce the Hampshire Regional Assessment by $350,387. But in the event the other four communities passed the budget, which they subsequently did, we had to identify a funding source. We voted to pull the money out of the operational fund, and then upon certification of free cash this year, which was received today totaling $953,608, we want to pay back the money that we borrowed into the operation account.
Do we have anyone who would speak against this motion for this article? Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 1, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 1 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 2, please? And by the way, the figures that you have in your handout are placeholders. Certified cash was certified today, and so we've changed the figures. So the motions will be a little different. Motion for Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $180,966.30 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Ziebeck, town administrator. So the next three articles are going to deal with how the town appropriates our free cash. And free cash is the remaining funds that have been unspent from the previous fiscal year. Currently, Southampton does have strong fiscal guidelines, so we look to allocate about 30% of our free cash to operations, 35% to capital, and 10% to OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. In this case, we would be putting 30% or $180,966.30 to the operating stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak against this motion for Article 2? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 2, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 2 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move that the town vote to transfer $361,932.60 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
John Lumber, Select Board. This is going to be a cumulative of 65% of the available money left over after we paid it back. The 35%, that is standard practice that we move in. After we do the 30, the 10, and 35, that's 75%, at least 25% uncommitted, the Select Board would like to commit that full 25% to the capital stabilization account to be used in further years. That brings the initial 35, which is $211,127.35, plus the 25%, 150, 805.25, for the total of $361,932.60 to be placed into capital for future one-time capital purchases.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak against the motion for this article? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 3, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 3 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 4, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $60,322.10 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits account.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Again, this is keeping with the current past practices of allocating 10% of free cash into the other post-employment benefits.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak against this motion for this article? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 4, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 4 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 5, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish a capital project stabilization fund in accordance with Chapter 71, Section 16G, 1-2 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the Hampshire Regional High School.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
I don't see the Hampshire Regional Chair. The intent of the Hampshire Regional School Committee is to create, at this point, to only create a fund that they could appropriate additional funds into at a later date to be used for one-time extraordinary improvements or repairs to the Hampshire Regional School Facility. At this point, they're only looking for all five communities to adopt their ability to do that.
Thank you. Anybody who wishes to speak against this article? Any other comments, questions?
Margaret Larson, 9 David Street, and I am on the Finance Subcommittee at Hampshire Regional and a member of Hampshire Regional School Committee. And this is an effort for all of us to understand where our money at the high school is going. We have a number of stabilization revolving funds, and we have consistently said over the years that we could use that for capital expenses. And we have a very large capital expense related to our field that we expect to be in excess of a million dollars. And so eventually, probably next year, we will transfer some of this money into a capital stabilization fund so that all of our towns understand exactly what we plan to do with that money and how it impacts town budgets.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 5. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 5 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 6, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $109,243 from the capital stabilization fund to the Norris School Highway Building Maintenance Library Accounts to fund the approved projects by the Capital Improvement Committee.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Johanna Rodriguez Douglas, Director of the Edwards Library. I'm delighted to see that this capital request was included in the warrant tonight. You'll see a request to help fund our lighting. We've already received money towards that end, about half of the amount. And then after 30 years, it would be lovely to have new carpeting in our conference room, and that's part of this. So thank you for including this capital request tonight.
Thank you, Johanna.
John Lumber, I'm on the Capital Committee. The Capital Committee received and reviewed a total of $1.4 million of requests. All requests that came before us, I believe there were 13, were scored and ranked with the highest priority to the lowest priority, and then we began allocating funds where we had enough funds to go down the list, which is how this particular list is ranked and scored. If we came to, item number one was the ADA doors at Town Hall because it's a fire code violation to have it, so it ranked high on the priority as an example. The next item was the library because there's a matching of another $10,000 that goes into that project, which is at risk of being lost if not approved before June 30. There were, I'm drawing a blank, there was another item before the Norris, but that single item may have been the $270,000 one that just clearly exceeded, hence why the Select Board want additional funds into the capital stabilization account.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak against this article? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. On the motion under Article 6, we need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 6 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Who would like to give a motion on Article 7, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $21,48,703.72 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal year 2025, as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2025, and to fix the salaries for all elected officials as shown and identified as FY 2025 budget, from taxation, $17,500 from WPAT loan, and $250,000 from ambulance fees. With these three different funding sources, the total operating budget for FY 2025 is $21,48,703.72.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And what I've done historically is to divide the question, to split up the budget into separate items rather than voting on the whole budget. We vote and discuss each grouping at a time, and we don't need to vote on the whole total package when we're done. So general government, $955,472.50.
Mr. Moderator, this budget represents a 2.37% increase over last year's original FY 24 budget, and a little under a 0.4% increase over the amended budget from last year. Putting it together, a budget is never an easy task, and I'd have to recognize the elected officials, our appointed officials, our volunteers, our employees, and our department heads. If you notice in the budget, a lot of hard work has gone into it, mostly due to the ability of, you know, working as a team from the Grants Committee bringing in every dollar that it can find, to Police Chief Illingsworth bringing in a $175,000 grant to fund a shared dispatch center with East Hampton. So I would ask for your favorable action on this.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak against this? Any questions? Any comments on the general government? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Public safety, $2581,194.16. Anyone who wish to address this? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the public safety amount, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Public safety budget passes unanimously. I'm sorry. My bad. Let me back up, getting ahead of myself. Education, $12,966,173. Any questions? Any comments?
Arthur Lawrence, 113 Crooked Ledge Road. I find it interesting, every town meeting that we have to blow down a budget. All the normal ones, such as public works or human health services, et cetera, et cetera, are all broken down quite nicely with the department head salaries and everything else. I get to the elementary school, and I see nothing. I see just everything lumped into four or five items. I'd certainly like to know what the department- I'd certainly like to know what the department head over there, this principal, how much additional she is making this year, what other salaries, et cetera, et cetera. So that's my question, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Would like to answer that, please?
John Lumber, Chair of the Norris School Committee. The Education Reform Act, that is law in this state, says that the school committee has authority over the individual line items and that only a summary of the totals to go before the town. But in full disclosure, if you watch the Finance Committee meeting, or the Norris School Committee meeting, or where the joint session with the Select Board, the school committee, in abundance of transparency, presents the entire budget, line by line, with salaries by individual status. So there is a principal line, an assistant principal, the teachers are all lumped together. So they're not called out by name similar to here. You only have the police chief's salary on one line, and all the police officers have another one. So the information is available, we do make it public, but at town meeting purposes, only a summary is put forward as the law dictates.
Thank you. That answer your question? Okay. Any other comments? Questions? You don't need to be invited to the mic. If you have something to say, just approach the mic. Seeing none, no more comments. We're going to vote on the amount for education. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for education passes by majority. May Public Works? One-million-one-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Anybody want to comment? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amount for Public Works. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for Public Works passes unanimously. Health and Human Services, one-hundred-eighty-one, I'm sorry, one-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-five dollars and nine cents. Health and Human Services budget, anybody wish to address, speak on that? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amount for Health and Human Services. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for Health and Human Services passes unanimously. Culture and Recreation, two-hundred-four-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-three dollars and ten cents. Anybody wish to speak on that? Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the Culture and Recreation amount. All those in favor, I'm sorry, yeah, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That budget passes unanimously. Employee Benefits, two-million-five-hundred-eighty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Any wish to speak on that? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amount for the budget for employee benefits. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for employee benefits passes unanimously. Debt Service Principal, three-hundred-two-thousand-five-hundred-forty-three dollars. Any comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the Debt Service Principal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Debt Service Interest, sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-eight dollars. Sorry? Oh. My bad. Teamwork, that's what we like here. One-hundred-eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-forty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That part of the budget passes unanimously, and we have an approved budget. May I hear a motion for Article Eight, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move that the town vote to approve the budget for the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Eight of the warrant for the May seventh, 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do your second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Tim Godet, one-thirty-eight Valley Road, Board of Water Commissioners. As stated in the handout, the Water Department operates through an enterprise fund, that is, the operations are funded based on charges to ratepayers. There's basically no changes as compared with last year's budget, it's actually a little bit less.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak against this motion for Article Eight? Any other comments? Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article Eight. Simple majority, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Eight passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote the budget of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Nine of the warrant for the May seventh, 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do your second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. The Transfer Station is also an enterprise fund and funded in the same way through fees paid by the ratepayers.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against this motion for Article Nine? Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article Nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Nine passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Ten, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to take no action on this article for acquisition of eighty-nine Clark Street.
Why?
I will give you some information on this for the residents. I'm also the Select Board member to the Senior Center Building Committee. So when making the recommendation last April, the former Senior Center Building Feasibilities Committee understood that the property at eighty-nine Clark Street would present some challenges, but it was clear at the public forum in March 2023 that the community preferred that location as the home of its future senior center. Since that time, the new building committee had its first meeting in January 2024, and since that time, the focus has been on conducting further due diligence on that particular property. This has included a review of the land survey and soil study, as well as undertaking a successful perk test, a title search, and most recently, a wetlands delineation. While it has been known that the land was wet, particularly towards the front of Clark Street, it only is now been aware that the wetlands have actually been mapped. And this has unfortunately revealed that they are more extensive than originally shown on various GIS maps. And the amount of actual contiguous buildable area for the center, its septic system and leach field, as well as the required parking spaces, is not sufficient for what is needed without significantly disturbing the adjacent wetlands. Therefore, we regrettably have decided to no longer pursue what would have otherwise been an ideal site for the senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion made, do your second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Questions on this? All those in favor to take no action on Article Ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion to take no action on Article Ten passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Eleven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain on such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems in the best interest of the town, property located off College Highway containing fifty-two acres more or less, identified as assessor's parcels map nineteen-one forty-one, nineteen through one forty-one, map nineteen-one forty-four, and map twenty-four fifteen, being the property described in a deed recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book fourteen-six-four-one, page three oh four, for general municipal purposes, including without limitation for a public safety complex and other uses, and further to borrow two-million-two-hundred-thousand for the acquisition of said property and costs incidental or related thereto, and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow all or a portion of said sum under GL Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, and further, to authorize the Select Board to execute any and all documents and take all other action necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing.
Motion made, do your second.
Second.
This requires a two-thirds majority vote, and since a borrowing by our bylaw, it requires paper ballot, so be prepared for paper ballot. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Chris Faust, eleven Gun Road, Chair of the Select Board. Tonight, the Select Board is presenting the residents of Southampton with a unique opportunity, and that is to share in our vision and consider not only the present needs of the town, but long-term ones as well. Many of you know that this property has been seen as the preferred location for a new public safety complex. A written offer for this land was received in February 2024. Originally proposed as a four-acre donation by the landowners, the designated area would have been landlocked until other further development on the property was undertaken. The Public Safety Building Committee and the town administrator determined that was not possible to accept a landlocked parcel, and in the interest of moving forward and not wait for other development plans that may happen for the remainder of the property, the Public Safety Building Committee asked to purchase one acre along Route Ten that would provide direct access to the future complex. Its price was five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. At the same time, the landowners informed the town administrator they were also willing to sell the entire parcel, approximately fifty-two additional acres. In following discussions with several committees, the Select Board has heard of the need for land for a variety of municipal purposes. We believe this land presents us with several options for future development. It is a prime location, has flat topography with soil suitable for building, and it borders the future rail trail. It is an ideal area, and there's not another location remaining in town that has so much potential. Some may think there are already enough town-owned properties. Those parcels, however, have been investigated over the past two years by both the Public Safety and Senior Center Building Committees. Nothing else has the acreage and geological features that meet the needs of these proposed buildings. So residents of town, you are being asked tonight to approve acquisition of this entire acreage. While the price may seem challenging, it is important to note that there are three or four parcels along Route Ten that are zoned commercial. With each valued at around five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the future sale of those alone would eventually provide revenue to offset the proposed short-term debt. If we pass up this opportunity to acquire land, not only to build a much-needed public safety complex, develop some affordable housing to help our seniors and first-time homebuyers stay in Southampton, provide additional recreation fields for our youth, and potentially include the future senior center, we will not be acting in our own best interest. Land costs will not come down, and we will again postpone the necessary action to provide first and foremost a proper work environment for our first responders. Please join the Select Board in seizing this one-time opportunity and make this vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against this motion for this article? Any comments? Open, mic open, just get in line.
Sierra Simmons, two-forty-two College Highway. I'm also the Chair of the Housing Authority, and the Housing Authority is in support of this purchase. This property has a lot of potential for affordable housing. As many of you know, the Housing Authority is charged with increasing affordable housing in the town of Southampton. The state standard for how, what percentage of affordable, of your units should be affordable is ten percent. They want ten percent of housing units in the town to be affordable. We're at less than three percent right now, so we have a long way to go. And this property is kind of ideal. The location is really great. It's located near amenities, which was really not the case with the other town-owned lots that are available. There's so many challenges with the other lots that we've investigated. There's wetlands, and most importantly, none of them are near any amenities, and it's just really not competitive for any grant funding or development. So we are strongly in favor of this acquisition.
Thank you.
Mark Cassis, nineteen Foma Road. Mr. Moderator, I'm speaking as a representative of the Greenway Committee. This had not come for a formal vote to the Greenway Committee, but we believe it is very consistent with what we're trying to develop for the Greenway, for the town. It would provide access to other open space that would be available. It will provide access through the bike path to potentially multiple town services. It potentially would provide access through the bike path, walking trails, to the elementary school, and therefore feel like it's very consistent with what the town has been developing for the Greenway, and we hopefully will see support for this acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Todd Baron, one-hundred Gun Road. I just have two questions. One is, please define municipal purposes, general municipal purposes. And my second question will help elucidate why I'm asking this question. Among other things, I'm a developer. It's a very interesting parcel. I submitted with a partner last year a development request for this property. I'm in favor of using this property for senior center and the public safety. What I'm concerned about is what the additional acreage will be used for, and so my question is, does municipal purposes include a commitment to, on the part of the town, to explore housing opportunities? We need affordable housing.
Thank you. Would like to answer that.
Yeah. If I could just answer, I thought I tried to address that in my overview. Yes, indeed, public safety complex is a high priority, but also affordable housing is an ideal, it's an ideal for, ideal location for affordable housing. The Parks Department has also talked about a need for extra land for playing fields, just some spillover property for extra playing fields because Conant Park and the Bree Field are quite well-used at most times, and even right out back of the school tonight, I believe, there's a lot of sports going on. So there's a lot of potential uses, but it would be for those kinds of things, and that's the, that would be a next step, should we acquire this property, would be to take and do further discussions with each of the various committees that have voiced a concern about needing land, find out what they really need, how much, that kind of thing. And so there's a, it's the beginning of a long planning process, I would say. But yeah, thanks.
Thank you. That answer your questions? Okay.
Maureen Grode, Nate Sherolane. I have, I support totally the town owning this property. There's not a lot of other land along the main corridor. I just have two questions. The first is, who will decide, or will the townspeople be able to vote on what ends up going on the land? There's a concern about our water supply and the Barnes Aquaphor, and there's also concern about runoff on Route Ten and negatively impacting the Fletcher Farm. So I'm just wondering if the town will have an opportunity to vote on all the initiatives that go, that are put before the town in terms of what's going to happen with this land?
Thank you.
I have a second question.
Yeah.
Shay, ask it now?
Ask the second one.
Okay. The second question is, the town had expressed an interest in this property in 2017, and it was purchased by the current owners for one-point-two million, and now it is being offered to the town for two-point-two million. I'm asking whether or not that is the assessed value of the property.
Okay. So I'll answer the second question first. The assessed valuation is not a particularly helpful benchmark. This is the negotiated price between representatives of the town and the owners, and it is five percent less than the appraised value, the appraisal that the town received, which in turn is less than the owner's own appraisal. So... So we negotiated hard, and we have a purchase and sale at under the town's appraisal value. To your first question, and picking up on the earlier one, and expanding on Chris's good answer, there are many potential uses. The property is large and varied, and what Chris has said in the past, and I'm going to commit to as a member of the Select Board, is that not only we do detailed due diligence and outreach with the individual committees who have already in public meeting expressed specific interest, but it will be a public planning process that as we get something to react to, of course, you have it for me, the public will be involved. There will be more than one opportunity to comment on how it's shaping up, because it's not just who needs how many acres, but how well do they complement each other? There's absolutely an opportunity for these varied uses to complement and reinforce each other. Runoff and vehicular access, among a whole list of other things, will be taken up in the site planning. They're absolutely central. We understand that one of the reasons that this was the second or not preferred choice for senior center is the particular corner of the lot that was offered, and concerns about access on the state highway, College Highway. All of that can be addressed through a good planning process to make sure that we accommodate all the important public uses that play well together. Does...
Thank you. That answer your question? That's what I thought I heard you saying. I was going to capture, will the town be able to vote on the individual projects as they come forward?
So on, on this particular, where we are tonight, should this pass tonight, the next step would be a vote at town meeting. We have our municipal elections two weeks from now. Unfortunately, it cannot go on the ballot at that time, because with a land acquisition article, we need a minimum of thirty-five days from the town meeting for it to go on the ballot. Therefore, it most likely would not come onto the ballot to vote to acquire this property. We haven't decided yet, but my guess would be at the time of the primary elections in September. We'd probably do a double, a double ballot would be one way of doing it to minimize cost and efficiency would be gained, I think, by doing that. So there's a early September third election for a prime, primary, is it primary? Am I right? For the, for the state officials. And so we would probably join a ballot question at that particular time, and that would conclude that, and then we could start some of this planning process that Stephen was talking about. Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay.
That's good. Thanks, Maureen. Thanks, Chris.
Christina Madsen, forty Rattle Hill, co-chair with Chief Illingsworth of the Public Safety Building Committee. So I'd like to speak both on behalf of the Public Safety Building Committee and then just as a resident. The committee spent the better part of a year investigating all of the avail, well, all of the privately-owned parcels and town-owned parcels that were centrally located as potential site for the new public safety building. And we, it was boiled down to two, and one was this parcel on College Highway, and then the other was, is the parcel that is adjacent to the current town hall. Those were presented to the architects, and they made us realize quite quickly that there were challenges with the site that is where the present fire station now stands. And so that, I have to admit, was a preferred site for me, but I, I did quickly realize as I became more knowledgeable that this is really the ideal site for a new safety complex. So I do urge you to, urge voters to approve of the purchase of this parcel. Now, as a, just a resident, I am fully behind the purchase of the entire parcel. It's valuable land. We will never have the opportunity to own such a large and versatile piece of land. It did not, it, it was not available to us in twenty seventeen, and we are lucky that it is available to us now, and I urge every voter to please support the acquisition of this parcel.
Thank you.
Mara Lamb, Pomeroy Meadow Road. So I am for this acquisition, but I'm wondering, would we sell what is now the fire station when it moves to the new location?
Okay, good question. I'll get an answer for you. Well, let's answer that.
I'll take a stab at that. I, I don't know, there's been no planning done on, on that regard. I'm not sure whether it would have any resale value per se, and I know the Historical Commission would weigh in on, on what needs to happen with that, but the last, I knew they were not particularly steadfast, I would say, in their former opposition to actually tearing that down. So that might be an option as well, might be an option to save some of the facade that was the old part of the fire station. Most of that has been added on to over time. So there's, all that would have to be decided. Nothing's been decided at all yet, but it would, sorry? I can't hear you.
But I heard potential.
Potential to sell it? Yeah, I, it's, I don't know. It's, it's outside, outside what we're able to talk about tonight. It's a possibility, anything's a possibility. I, I don't say we have anybody lining up to do that right now to be a willing buyer, so. I'm not sure the likelihood is very strong, but I, I won't close the door on the possibility, I guess. Thank you.
That answer your question? Thank you.
Ian Illingsworth, Police Chief. I just wanted to follow up on Christina Madsen. I co-chair the Public Safety Building Complex Committee with Christina, and I think it's very important to recognize how the central location of this lot of land is imperative to public safety. And not only is it abutting the, the potential, the, the Greenway, but it's also a central location for our emergency responders, and we're losing that land. And as Christina mentioned, the spot where the town hall is currently, that would have been a good spot, but it's not practical for a public safety complex. Additionally, as far as public safety goes, you, on a day like today, I'm sure we all drove here and saw the amount of pedestrians on Pomeroy Meadow Road and Route ten. Route ten and Pomeroy Meadow Road has the most significant sidewalk and multi-use infrastructure within the town, and this particular lot, that, the fact that it will abut the, the Greenway will increase public safety for people riding their bikes and walking as well.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're going to vote. You receive this little yes or no, kind of fold it, rip it, separate it, and whatever you're voting yes or no, you're going to be putting that in the box, and you keep the other one for a bookmark later on when you do your reading before you go to bed.
So you can only vote no on the next article. Yeah, well, you must be special.
Oh, wow.
I think you're one of the Democrats. Wait, wait, wait. Thank you. I care what you like, but rest me. It has seventy-five pounds of votes on it.
Only vote once. In other towns, they line everybody up, they go up to a basket, and they hand everyone the ballot. You then rip yes or no, you put it in the box, and then you give your other piece of paper to another person, and you go back to your seat. And I understand it takes a long time. So this may be very informal, but this is what we do. It's efficient. If you haven't voted, just raise your hand. In case they bypassed you.
I think there's going to be a need for...
It's a good chance to look and greet your neighbor sitting next to you and behind you and in front of you.
Yeah, but more than that, that addresses the public safety, not the whole. I think we got to vote, maybe the whole, a little more tangential. No, that's right. But if we have negotiated land to create a long, long process, even if we're not...
Looks like they've taken all the ballots. Again, if no one has voted, raise your hand. They're going to be counting the ballots. We'll proceed. Mayor, and then we'll announce the results later. Mayor, a motion for Article twelve, please.
Motion on twelve. Oh, twelve. Motion to move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling forty-four thousand dollars within the police department operating budget count as listed in Article twelve of the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Annual Town Meeting warrant. Said sum to come from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts listed.
Motion made, Director Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Ian Illingsworth, Police Chief. These are interdepartmental transfers within my budget. The expense costs are more specific to fuel increases as well as unexpected cruiser repairs, and the overtime costs are due to earlier shorting staffages within the year that required us to staff shifts on overtime to ensure that we had proper personnel on the shift.
Thank you. Anyone to speak against this motion for Article twelve? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article twelve. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article twelve passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling forty-three thousand, six hundred dollars from EMT wages to the assist, to the assistant grant match account if the town is approved to participate in the federal grant.
Motion made, Director Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this motion for Article thirteen?
Mr. Moderator, Chris Faals, speaking this time as Chair of the Grant Committee. The Grant Committee has put together with former fire chief from Southwick a federal grant request, actually two of them, one for a tanker truck, which is around, somewhere around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and another one is for about twenty units of self-contained breathing apparatus, and that one is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These are federal grants. The applications have gone in. We expect to hear on them by July. If we get this money, which either one or both, the two together are around nine hundred thousand dollars, if we got one or both, if we were lucky to get both, but at least one would be nice, would actually help our fire department out. As we all know, we've been looking for a tanker truck for a while, and this is an opportunity that came up. So we took the opportunity and put in a grant, and the nice thing about this grant is it requires only five percent match from the town, which is extremely low compared to most grants. A lot of them are one-to-one, a lot of them are at least twenty-five percent. This is a five percent match on a federal grant, thus the request for forty-three hun, forty-three thousand, six hundred to have available, should we get the grants. If we don't get the grants, obviously, we don't spend the money.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak against the motion for Article thirteen? Any other comments, opinions, questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article thirteen. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article thirteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article fourteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling three thousand, five hundred dollars from group health insurance account to the townwide and municipal department operating budget accounts as listed in Article fourteen of the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Annual Town Meeting warrant. Said sums to come from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts listed.
Motion made, Director Second. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This transfer recovered the last two months of this fiscal year for town hall maintenance. As the building gets older, the costs are slowly rising. Things like the council line aging HVAC system, the entrance doors to the alarm system and elevator maintenance are all things that we're kind of focusing on. Obviously, preventative maintenance is our, probably our number one priority, and this will help us accomplish that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to, anybody want to speak against this motion? Any other comments, questions, opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article fourteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article fourteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article fifteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling fifteen thousand dollars from assistant accountant wage account to the town hall IT service budget account as listed in Article fifteen of the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Annual Town Meeting warrant. Said sum come, sums to come from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts listed.
Second.
Motion made, Director Second. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please? Did the little one make a second?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This would help us improve our access to town hall Wi-Fi. Currently, our Wi-Fi system throughout the building is a patchwork of residential systems, and most concerning is it doesn't meet our modern security standards. So what this fifteen thousand dollars would do is not only bring us updated equipment as well as security, but also rewiring the majority of town hall.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against this motion for Article fifteen? Any other comments, questions, opinions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article fifteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article fifteen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article sixteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of four thousand, ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents from the assistant account, accountant wage account to the town administrator salary account.
Motion made, Director Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Bradley Oxon, Town Accountant. During our transition of town administrators, I was tasked with seeing how much is available in the town administrator wage line, not neglected to factor in Ed's vacation payout. So this article gives the town administrator wage line enough money to pay Scott for the rest of the year, and my assistant town accountant wage line had nineteen thousand, eight hundred, eleven dollars. With the passage of fifteen and sixteen, there'd be seven hundred, twenty dollars, sixty-seven cents available. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradley. Anyone who wishes to speak against the motion for Article sixteen? Any other opinions, comments, questions? Seeing none, will vote for the motion for Article sixteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article sixteen passes unanimously. Article seventeen, may I hear a motion, please?
Move that the town vote to insert a new article entitled nuisance slash peace and quiet and set forth in Article seventeen of the warrant for the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Annual Town Meeting into the... into the town's general bylaws and renumber the subsequent sections of the general bylaws accordingly.
Motion made, dryer second. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road, Chair of the Bylaw Advisory Committee. In the interest of time, of saving time, I'm consolidating my introduction of the three bylaw articles, 17, 18, and 19. Generally speaking, the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee's job is to review and update existing general bylaws, eliminate bylaws that are no longer relevant, and develop new bylaws to address current and necessary local and state issues. All bylaws drafted by the committee are subject to a rigorous process that requires review of each draft before going into effect. That includes the approval of the following entities. The first is relevant town department committees and boards. The second review is conducted by the Select Board. Third, the document then goes to Town Council. Fourth, it moves on to meetings like tonight, either annual or special town meetings. And then finally, they go on to the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, at which point, and upon their approval, the bylaw will go into effect. Specifically for the three general bylaws before you tonight, the following details the due diligence of the Bylaw Committee. For two of the three bylaws you will consider tonight, it's important to note that public meetings were held to gather input from residents. Those public sessions were in addition to collaboration with relevant departments and committees. In drafting the Nuisance, Peace, and Quiet bylaw, the public meeting was held on September 21st, all the way back in 2021, at which input from the meeting participants was incorporated into the draft that you have before you tonight. Subsequent to that meeting and over this long period of time, the Bylaw Committee has made several additional modifications based on the direction that we received from Town Council. The document was completed in close collaboration with the police department, who have an interest in this issue. Then on October 23rd, 2023, a public meeting was held to gather public input for the revision of the Unregistered Vehicles bylaw, at which several local farmers were in attendance. The Bylaw Committee sought and received the approval from the Agricultural Commission for, Committee, for the draft you have before you tonight. And then finally, the Board of Registars is a new bylaw, which includes state regulations covering the board's duties and responsibilities. The Board of Registars approved this draft at their meeting on April 17th, 2024. The final decision on all of these articles is up to all of you in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against the motion for Article 17, please come forward.
Gary Thomas, 7 East Street, Southampton. I just have a question on the nuisance bylaw. It seems like there's a lot of things delineated in it. But who determines the level of noise? I'm wondering if there, if the police department could address, are there many complaints for noise or nuisance? What is bringing this about? And that's my general question.
Thank you. Would like to answer that.
Ian Illingsworth, Police Chief. Prior to having or not having any nuisance noise bylaws, we would go by general laws, which is a common law. And the common law specifically is it's based on an objective standard. Would a reasonable, prudent person believe that the noise being made is disturbing the peace? It falls under the statute of disturbing the peace. That particular statute relies on the officers to respond to a loud noise complaint and make that determination, which is sometimes a difficult determination. If oftentimes, we'll go to the, some apartment complexes, we'll have loud noise complaints at 3:00 in the morning because somebody works the evening shift and they might be watching their TV. Well, objectively, that's not a loud noise. However, at 11:00, when someone's blaring their stereo, that is. In those situations, we don't have any other discretion than to give warnings, summons, criminally summons, or arrest. What I think is important in this particular bylaw is what the operative word of is excessive noise. And it's between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And I think that that's the, what's, what's key in this bylaw is that it defines excessive noise in the actual hours, 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, where that is not defined in the general laws.
Thank you.
And it's also a civil infraction, not a criminal infraction.
Thank you. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Cheers. Anyone else?
Maureen Groden, H. Cheryl Lane. I appreciate the work of the Bylaws Committee, and I did attend the public forum. I think my general concern about bylaws is we want to have a community where we have rules and that we attend to the peace of the community. But we don't want to have rules that don't allow individuality or that aren't inclusive. So that's my general concern about this particular bylaw. I think there's a tremendous amount of detail in it around what's allowed, what's not allowed. From what Chief Illingsworth just said, I still think it's a judgment call. I don't think there's anything in this current bylaw that says, there's no decibel readings. The enforcement is three different bodies, the Building Inspector, the Fire Department, the Police Department. And in the past, my experience is that bylaws such as these were monitored as a quality of life thing with the Board of Health. And I was just wondering why the Board of Health is not included in this particular bylaw.
Thank you. Would like to answer that question? Why the Board of Health wasn't included?
They were not included in this, in this review. Just simply be, I know where you're coming from in terms of the health and so forth. But since we had absolutely no measuring device listed in here, we did not include the Board of Health in this review.
Thank you. I lost you, Reenie. Did that answer your question? Cheers. Next.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, which is at a corner. It's at a corner at the bottom of Cold Spring Road. In the 27 years I've lived here, the increased sound on that corner is, you know, just extreme. And I, my question is this. While we don't have a decibel measurement, if I, as a citizen, felt like, oh my gosh, I'm listening to too many motorcycles that don't have mufflers or large trucks that, I think it's called a J-brake, can I call the police department and say, can you come and listen a little bit here and maybe do a, you know, a spot check on this kind of location? That's my, my question. I don't, I know it's not between the nighttime hours and the early morning hours. It's kind of like a Sunday afternoon situation.
Got your question?
So if that is relative to this particular bylaw, it would have to be between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. As far as outside of this bylaw and excessive noise, the officers certainly would be able to respond. But to be very candid with you, sometimes those infractions are very hard to enforce. We have to ensure that the vehicle before we stop it is in violation of mass general laws. And it's, there are times where that's pretty apparent with, with certain exhaust systems. But some of the noise that you may be hearing, it may not be as transparent. And officers have to utilize the law in order to stop that vehicle. So in that case, yes, you can contact the police department. The police department can observe, but it's, it can be difficult to enforce unless it's very apparent that there's a violation of mass general laws.
Thank you. That answer your question? Okay, anybody else? Step right up.
Francine Tishman again. As far as the J-brakes, we did look into that because that was a complaint by several people. The, the, I couldn't, I can't say if I could identify them if I heard them. But understanding from people how disruptive they are. But apparently, they serve a very important safety function on vehicles. And accordingly, from our understanding, the state says we cannot prohibit them. So that is what we went by. It wasn't that we didn't hear from people.
Thank you.
It was what we, our understanding and what we were told.
Thank you.
And when we had this review, then I'm telling you, it took two years to review it all by the lawyers. Those were the kinds of things that we were grappling with to get to where we are today. But at this point, as I said, it's really all up to you.
Thank you, Francine. Randall?
Randall, County 64 Fulmer Road. Just some clarification. I see that there's, under Section 4 exemptions, noise associated with homeowner or contractor work allowed between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekdays. And then below, it talks about having to get a permit from the building commissioner. So if somebody was going to work on their house, they would have to get a permit every week? Is that correct?
Somebody want to answer that?
Excuse me. As far as I can see, there's, there's no limit on the duration of the permit. It's that it wouldn't be valid for more than three days from the time of issue. So every, I guess what you're saying then would be that every three days, if that were the case.
Francine.
Or map it out. You're looking at Section 5?
Francine?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That answer your question, Randall?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, good. Next? Go ahead.
Under the exemptions, there is also two exemptions that are between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. And I'm wondering why the differentiation?
Okay, I caught that too.
The exemption for the additional hour of 10:00 PM was allowed?
Francine?
Yes.
Better your director toward me and the mic so we can all hear you.
All right. The exemption, or the extension of one hour from 9:00 to 10:00 was to accommodate people who had outdoor parties and entertainment, realizing that perhaps 9:00 o'clock was too soon to cut it off. But for other noises, 9:00 would be, would be the time limit. Okay?
Thank you. That answer your question, Randall?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Erin Dufrain, 22 East Street. I think the other thing Randall was asking about with the permit, it says to operate equipment outside the specified hours above. I hope to God we are not approving permits for someone to start construction at 4:00 in the morning.
Anybody else have any questions, opinions, concepts? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion for Article 17. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Let's do a count. Counters, please come forward. Not as dumb as I look. I don't guess anymore. All those in favor, please raise your card up high. The orange card, and keep it up there. Keep them up for now? Okay, put them down. Thank you.
In my section, 10 in favor.
Sorry?
In my section, 10 in favor.
10? Is that the, I hear 10?
Yep.
10.
17 in my section.
10 and 17.
In favor.
In my section, 18 in favor.
18.
In my section, 24 in favor.
How many, 20?
24.
24. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Think you can lower your cards? Thank you.
Okay, our total is 39.
39 to total?
Total.
For all four of you, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, the motion for Article 17 passes by majority, 69 to 39. May I hear a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to insert a new article entitled Board of Registars bylaw as set forth in Article 18 of the warrant for the May 7, 2024 Annual Town Meeting into the town's general bylaws and renumber the subsequent sections of the general bylaws accordingly.
Motion made, dryer second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Joyce of Renshawlaquist, it was actually your baby who was speaking.
I, I addressed that in my introductory remarks, but I will repeat that it is a new bylaw, that it includes the state regulations that cover the board's duties and responsibilities. And the Board of Registars approved this draft last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition?
I'm not speaking in opposition. Maureen Groden, H. Cheryl Lane. The question is, this is exactly what mass general laws states for the Board of Registars. So I'm just wondering why, why do we need a bylaw?
Thank you. Who would like to answer that?
To our knowledge, there, we have to, our bylaws have to be as, as least they can be more restrictive than the state bylaws, but not least, not less restrictive. So in this instance, and the question came up when we presented it to the Select Board, there was no accommodation or accounting for people serving on this committee, on this Board of Registars, who may be unenrolled. That was not part of what was in the state regulations. And if you look very carefully, we included both political parties and opportunities for people who are unenrolled to apply for membership on the Board of Registars. for people who are unenrolled to apply for membership on the reg, on the Board of Registars. That's the difference.
Thank you. Did I answer your question? Great. Anybody else want to speak on this? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article 18, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 18 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please?
Hold on. Okay, just a minute. Find my page. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Article 11 of the town's general bylaws entitled the keeping of unregistered motor vehicles by amending the existing language as noted, deleting existing language where noted, and replacing it with the new language as shown as set forth in Article 19 of the warrant for the May 7, 2024 town meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please? Thank you, Chris.
Chris Fowles, 11 Gun Road, also a member of the bylaws review advisory committee. I think, as Francine mentioned, this was one where residents had come to us and talked about the need to clarify some of the language. It was pretty ambiguous in our current bylaw, which was very short, only a few sentences. And then after a public information meeting, we took some feedback and modified the unregistered motor vehicle bylaw to include certain provisions that were more, more clearly defined than what had been there before, basically.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the motion under Article 19?
I would just like to mention that I find that this particular bylaw is restrictive to a point that...
A little closer, Carl. A little closer.
This particular, the way this is worded, if you had an individual that was in the process of restoring an antique car, or something of that nature, in, my father did it, and it took him almost five years to get all the pieces and parts to do the restoration. This restricts someone that basically couldn't even begin to restore a vehicle if they had to order parts or wait for parts. I think this is a little too restrictive.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak?
I would just like to comment that there are provisions for exemptions and special permits for cases like that. I mean, we're really looking to, to try to address some of the concerns that people have about yards full of, not, not necessarily full, but, but the unregistered vehicles strewn about people's property in their neighborhood. And so this just was a provision to make certain that things were in order if they were unregistered. We gave great exemption to all farm equipment. They are exempt from this. And there are opportunities for people who are restoring vehicles, et cetera, to get a special permit from the select board and, and take the time you need to restore it.
Thank you.
Chris Laptu, 40 Gun Road Extension. So I just wanted to get clarification, because it's hard to read with it crossed out. So it looks like before you could have...
Could you draw your comments to me?
It looks like before, it says more than one unregistered vehicle. So it sounds like before you could have one without any repercussions of an unregistered, unregistered vehicle on your property. But if you had two, then you had to kind of go through a permit process. This one, it seems like it eliminates that. If you have any unregistered vehicles, you have to have a permit for it, and a garage for it. Is that accurate? So if you have an unregistered vehicle on your property, you have to get a permit for it, but you also have, have to have a garage for it? Is that accurate?
Oh, I could answer to your question. Who would like to answer that?
Section 4, I think.
I think we were, we were talking, you could, the option was if you didn't have a cover, a garage type covering, that the vehicle could be covered by other, by the vehicle covering that you can purchase in the store.
Francine?
Yes.
Director comments to me, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's, that's how I believe I understood it or intended it to be, that it didn't have to mean that we had to build, start building garages as long as they were, they had, they were covered by, by other material that you could purchase.
Thank you. Did I answer your question?
If I can add to it, if I may.
Hello?
Robert, can I add?
Did that answer your question?
I mean, the way, the way that it's written, it seems like it has to be a garage. So if you don't have a garage, then you get fined for having a car that's unregistered on your property. You got 30 days or the fine keeps going up. So you have to either sell your unregistered vehicle, or every 30 days you're going to get a fine until you build a garage. Is that accurate?
They're saying no.
No.
Can you clarify what a covering is for a car, then?
It's, the covering is defined in the vehicle cover on the second page.
Judy Keener, County Road. Vehicle cover. A covered design specifically for the purpose of a covering a motor vehicle. General purpose, tarp shall not be considered a vehicle cover.
More to the mic.
A tarp is not considered vehicle cover if stored within public view. It also specifies that even if you get a permit from the building commissioner, it is only for a period of six months, is the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Walennis, College Highway. On all of these, it says a special permit. Who's, what is the cost of this permit now? Are we making, we turning all these bylaws into expense and income revenue for the building?
We got a question. Somebody want to answer about the special permit? How much?
On the current bylaw, the one that's in existence now, there is a special permit clause.
Francine?
There is a special permit clause that I do not believe has a fee attached to it. So it's by getting, requesting a special permit for those conditions stipulated in the current bylaw. This is just an extension of that same permit process.
Thank you. May I answer your question, Tammy?
Sort of. When is the building inspector and commissioner going to be at Town Hall? They're not there on Fridays. So now we have to go, we have to know by Thursday if we're going to be having, making noise, and now we have to know if we're going to be working on a car.
Sounds right.
And the hours...
Because we are clear on Friday, everybody knows that. That's true.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Doug Hamel, 7 Sophie. One point to make, there was a question about unregistered vehicles in reference to the previous bylaws. And both the new and the old bylaw reference more than one. So by definition, the way it's written now, if you have one unregistered or non-operable vehicle, this does not apply. It's the two or more. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Maureen Groh, Nate Charleane. I think this is a discriminatory bylaw. I don't think everybody can afford a garage. I think it should be a health issue if there's a large number of unregistered vehicles that are causing environmental concerns around oil and gas spillage or whatever. I think that's the issue. I think as it's written, I think it's discriminatory.
Thank you.
Chris Grant, 25 Helen Drive. I guess, was there any consideration taken to people who seasonably register vehicles like motorcycles and usually take them off the road? Because, I mean, one, maybe not, but one seems like a low limit to me for seasonal. And, you know, is, is there a duration or something where you could show that you seasonally register the vehicle to be exempt from this?
This question, who would answer that?
In Section 2 of the new bylaw, it says a single recreational vehicle or single camping boat or utility trailer in operating condition which is being registered seasonally.
Seriously? No, no cross-examination. You want your turn, you come to the mic.
It's, it's listed as an exemption.
That didn't answer your question. Please clarify it. Thank you.
I guess there's two parts. It still says one, and is that one in addition to the unregistered vehicle? Or is that one in place of the other unregistered vehicle?
Thank you.
I see what you're saying. It would be, it would almost, you would think it would count as two. That's something we would have to look at. I mean, we could go back and look at it. I wouldn't count it as two since one is seasonally registered and the other one is unregistered for the entire year.
Well, you're saying you want to look at it. You're talking about having...
We'll look at it.
In the future, an amendment, once it passes or not?
I guess we would consider an amendment for this, just to clarify that, because that was not the intent.
So you want to make an amendment now?
Yes, but I would have to put it in writing.
I need a duplicate.
Okay. I would just, I would just change it a...
I need it written.
Yeah, all right.
So I can read it, we can vote on it, and one for the town clerk.
Okay. I'll try and do it before the end of the meeting.
We'll do it now. We're not going to vote if somebody wants to make an amendment.
Can I call the question?
That's fair. I was going to reintroduce this years ago. Calling the question was abused. And it was really inconsiderate sometimes, and also it was appropriate. I've gotten away from that because I don't want people shouting from their seats. But calling the question basically is we're going to vote to vote. And so we have a few more people wanting to speak, but I will let these two people speak, and then we'll call the question to vote to vote. Does that make sense?
My name is Chad Baruki, 115 County Road, Southampton. I've also attended the meeting on October 23, and it was a very spirited meeting, working with Christine and Francine, discussing the issues that farmers confront. All of you, I'm sure, have driven by our property and county road. And we have vehicles, unfortunately, we have wide open spaces, so our vehicles are clearly in view. The challenge that we have is that we have a property which, for which we don't have large fences to keep out ATVs and others right onto our property, rip down our posted signs and so forth, steel catalytic converters, radiators, carburetors, and starters from our vehicles, which of course contributes to excessive noise if we have to run them. So the challenges are quite large for us to have to deal with these types of issues. I really like the spirit in which this committee has approached us, asking for our concerns. But my property, where I live personally, is carved out of our farm property, and I have moved some vehicles from which catalytic converters have been stolen onto my personal property in order to keep a more watchful eye over them. Does this mean now that I'll have to build a large garage on my own personal property, which is carved out of our farm property, in order to comply with this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Colley, 6 Jonathan Judd. This is just a comment, like, you know, who would think that I would care about this one? You know, I mean, I think having old used cars or whatever, you know, that can be a nice, or as can the house that has, you know, four teenagers and there's, you know, every single space on the driveway is, is taken. But you know, I had a car in my driveway for like maybe nine months. Why? A grandchild who lives in the city in Hoyo needed to put a car that she didn't have her license, it wasn't registered, and needed brakes. You know, pretty innocent. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if this is restrictive to people. You know, who knows what happens? You know, so I just would like people to consider it.
Thank you. We're going to vote to vote. All those in favor of ending debate now will indicate by saying aye. Those who want to continue the debate will vote nay. All those in favor of ending the debate, calling the question to vote, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to vote. The majority has it. We call the question. So all those...
Going to the board?
Yes. You can do it from your seat.
Oh, I want to be heard. Just to clarify, the vote that we're about to take, if it goes down, the existing bylaw that's on the books stays in place. Correct? Because this is replacing one.
Yes. All those in favor of the motion under Article 19, please indicate by holding up your cards. Opposed, please indicate by holding up your cards. The opposition is unanimous. This motion under Article 19 fails. May I hear a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Code of Southampton in Chapter 275 zoning bylaw in Table 1, Use Regulations, by changing all references to use permitted by special permit from zoning Board of Appeals to use permitted by special permit from planning board.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Demon from Palmary Meadow Road, Planning Board. Last year, this body unanimously passed a zoning package that we had been revising for several years, and we're grateful for that. However, due to a clerical error and miscommunication, somehow the table of use regulations for the bylaws that were passed didn't make it into the packet. So last, two weeks ago, May 1, we had a public meeting, hearing, to propose this, to be put on this warrant. And not to repeat, but it's changing the special permit authority board from zoning to planning board. And some of the reasons behind that, we thought to streamline the process for applicants because the planning board now is already currently involved in site plan, stormwater, and subdivision permitting. So this would be one less meeting or board that the applicant would have to go before. So I would ask your consideration to change this to planning board.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of Article 20? Any other comments, questions, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote. We need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 20, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 20 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 21, please?
Hi, I am a representative of the Community Preservation Committee, and Robert likes to have us read the motions for these ones, so here we go. I move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2025, and to allocate sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 21 of the warrant of the May 7, 2024 annual town meeting. Would you like me to read those numbers?
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Please speak on it.
So this is the, this is something we do every year. It allocates the projected revenue for the CPA fund for this year into the required designated funds. So 10% has to go into the historical... So 10% has to go into the Historic Resources Fund, 10% has to go into community housing, 10% has to go into open space and recreation, but what we do is we pay down a bond payment for 68 Pomeroy Meadow Road, which is kind of in lieu of that open space and recreation, and then 7,500 for administrative expenses, and then all of the rest goes into an account called budget reserves.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition to the motion under Article 21? Any questions, comments, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 21 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $23,000 from Community Preservation Surcharges to the Southampton Greenway Committee for the town's local matching share of a Mass Trails grant for the design process of the greenway bicycle and pedestrian path. Said funds to be taken from the Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Recreation account.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Good evening. Aaron Taucher, 8 Palmory Meadow Extension, also a member of the Southampton Greenway Committee. I just want to emphasize, this is a match. As was stated earlier, matches are often required for grant funds. The total value of this grant is $132,000 that the committee would be able to use for advancing engineering and design work, and that would keep the costs out of the taxpayers' pockets, so we do hope this article is voted favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of the motion for Article 22? Any questions, comments, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote. On the motion for Article 22, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 22 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 23, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $24,500 from Community Preservation Surcharges to the Southampton Cemetery Commission to repair and replace the damaged metal fence.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Ziebeck, Town Administrator. The appropriation of $24,500 would go to restoring the iconic fence that we all see in front of the cemetery.
Okay. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the motion under Article 23? Any questions, comments, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote. A motion for Article 23? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 23 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 24, please?
Move that the town vote to acquire by purchase, gift, ediment, domain, or otherwise, a conservation restriction on a parcel of land located on Foma Road, Southampton. Said parcel containing 25 acres more or less and being tax map 27 lot 4, or upon such portion of said property as a select board and/or conservation commission determines to be in the best interest of the town, so long as said acquisition is supported by an appraisal. Said conservation restriction to be under the care, custody, management, and control of the conservation commission pursuant to general law, Chapter 48(c), and further to fund said acquisition, transfer the sum of $250,000 from the Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I'm the chairperson of the Open Space Committee. I support a yes vote on this article and urge everyone here to do the same. I'm going to explain it a little bit. This article would allow the town to acquire a conservation restriction on one of the parcels that has been part of the Mountain Waters Landscape Partnership Project. There's a handout here. I hope you've all had a chance to look at it. Just for context, CPC funds representing approximately 12% of the entire $3.5 million plus cost to obtain 731 acres of Southampton land to be conserved in the Mountain Waters Project was supported by the Select Board, the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Committee, and was voted in the affirmative unanimously by Southampton voters at the 2023 special town meeting last December. This land, referenced in the article "The Forest" tonight, was one of those Mountain Waters Project properties. This is not a new conservation project. And I spoke to the benefit of the Mountain Waters Project. I'm not going to repeat it all now because it was unanimously supported in December. The vice chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee stands ready to explain the financial specifics for why you are asked to support transferring an additional $250,000 from Community Preservation Surcharges, which will be fully reimbursed back to Southampton as part of this project. I can tell you that the Mountain Waters Project includes parcels owned by several landowners in different parts of Southampton. Each parcel has unique features. Our partners, the Kestrel Land Trust Conservation Professionals, have worked diligently to address the many details in the project, including, but not limited to, completing the multifaceted application for the Massachusetts Landscape Partnership Grant, arranging the surveys and appraisals, and securing private funds to defray the costs, all on behalf of Southampton. Tonight's vote is needed to address requirements to secure a portion of that funding that will allow the return of $250,000 to our CPA fund. Your yes vote is needed to move this project along to total access. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak at all?
Mark Cassis, 19 Foma Road, speaking as vice chairman of the CPA Committee. This is a completely reimbursable $250,000 based on the state landscape partnership grant, which is part of the total Mountain Waters Project. So it is basically, the town needs to put out the $250,000 in order to be reimbursed and does not currently have that in the budget, so it's a temporary loan in a way that will get reimbursed within a couple of months. The actual total amount that the town has committed to this conservation restriction is only $20,000 out of the $900,000 cost, assuming that all the other funds can be raised through Kestrel and other sources. So it will only be released if all the other funds are gathered, and it will be fully reimbursed very shortly, within a few months. And the actual town commitment has already been voted on, but it's only $20,000 of the total $900,000. So I just want to reimburse. It's completely reimbursable. It's a short-term fix because of the state grant process.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 24. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 24 passes unanimously. Do we have results of our secret ballot back there? Closer to the mic.
For Article 11, yes is 124, no is 6.
How much?
124 yes, 6 noes.
Okay, thank you. The motion for Article 11, which needed two-thirds majority, passes by majority, meeting our two-thirds requirement, 124 to 6. May I hear a motion to Article 25, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town by adding a new section to subsection 35-11 to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by the Board of Health for health inspections under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 44, Subsection 53e 1/2.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Past practice had been that there was an employee within the health department that was performing these services, and for more than a year now, we've contracted out. So we want to mirror what we do for the electrical inspector in plumbing, where we create the revolving account that can pay the contractor. Fees are charged, a percentage of those fees go into the revolving account. A month later, the contractor invoices, and the money's there to pay them off.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition for the motion under 25? Any comments, questions, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 25. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 25 passes by majority. Who would like to give me a motion for Article 26, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to set the limitations on expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article 26 of the May 7th, 2024 annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Again, this is something we do every year. We have to set the spending limit. I just think it's important to point out that because the dollar amounts are there, it doesn't mean they can be spent in deficit. You have to collect the receipts first before you can actually pay out these funds.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition?
Maureen Grode, Nate Charle Lane. I have a question. So we used to have a revolving fund for the Board of Health, and then it was removed. I'm just wondering if someone from the Board of Health can explain exactly what happens in terms of the health inspections? I used to be in the Board of Health, and I know that plans are submitted to the Board of Health. They're typically reviewed by the elected Board of Health, and then the inspector goes out and does the inspection, and there's a secondary inspection when it's finalized. And so since you use the electrical inspections as a corollary, the electrical inspections, none of the spending limits are $60,000, so electrical inspections are 20. So I'd just like to understand exactly what the process is for the inspections, and does the Board of Health have like the last two or three years of expenditures and information on how much these inspections cost and how much we're paying annually, because it's so much higher than all the other revolving accounts?
Thank you. Who would like to address this?
Well, I'm not a Board of Health member. I can address the last question about the $60,000. It was based on the past two years of actuals that were being done.
That answer your question? Not fully.
We had a health inspector who was paid $25, $30 an hour. We haven't been able to have a health inspector. Now we're playing a contractor. Is this the future of funding the Board of Health is by having inspections? I just want to understand the process of, so $60, I think, is how much we're paying the current contractor. So I'm just wondering, is this the new plan for funding the Board of Health? Is the inspection process involve like three steps? And I'm just wondering why the total amount is so high compared to other revolving accounts?
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if there's a member of the Board of Health.
Because once you take the money out of the department and create a revolving fund, it can no longer be used for any other town use.
Somebody want to address this? Give an answer?
I don't know if anybody else from the Board of Health is here. I'm not seeing the chair or anyone else. I believe she wasn't able to come tonight. I don't know that we can speak to the fact whether this is a permanent idea or not in terms of what they're planning on doing, but as John said, the amount is significantly more, but it's based on two years of actual track record in costs.
I'm the liaison from the Select Board to the Board of Health, and one of the reasons that I heard, offered for this increased amount is that contrary to the past, when our health agent was able to do all the inspections, we're increasingly facing more complex issues, including land takings, enforcement actions for cleanup activities. It's not just the routine inspections anymore, and so we've exceeded the expertise of our permanent staff, and we rely on contractors for their specialized expertise, and this
It's the best thing we can do so far. She's not satisfied with the answer.
Correct. So speaking only from my point of view on the Select Board, this is a one-year attempt to get through the next budget year for failure of qualified applicants who want to be on the W-2 side.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, opinions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 26. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 26 passes by majority. That concludes our business for the night. I want to entertain a motion now to dissolve our annual town meeting.
Motion to dissolve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you to Ms. Sabina McCarthy, our town clerk, for the evening, our counter, C. Hampton Media, Police Chief Ian. Safe home, everyone. Thank you.